The Leominster City Council meeting is funded in part by DeCarulous Insurance Agency at www.decarolousinsuranceagency.com.
We have our first legal affairs hearing.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. We have several, we have three public hearings, legal affairs in a row. My name is Peter Angelini, Chairman of Legal Affairs. I'd like to introduce the other two members of Legal Affairs Committee, Counselor Mark Bedanza and Counselor Pauline Cormier. So, Kilios Commuter Services LLC, on behalf of the MBTA, requests a flammable liquids license for four standard certified double-wall steel 1,000-gallon-volume propane tanks at 163 Pioneer Drive. Legal Affairs, I'm sorry. Before I do that, I will introduce, received a communication from the fire chief on this. The chief wrote on January 9th, Counselor, Kilios contacted the Leominster Fire Prevention Office over a year ago, requesting to store and use 4,000 gallons of liquefied petroleum gas at the rear of Pioneer Drive for use on the switching gear of the rail tracks. Somewhere along the process, they misunderstood that they needed a license from the Leominster City Council. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 148, Section 13, and 527 CMR-1, they are only required to obtain a permit from the fire department for the 4,000 gallons of LPG storage. The chart in the Massachusetts Amendments 527 CMR-1, 1.12.8.50, requires a permit for less than 10,000 gallons. I will be in work tomorrow if you need more information. So, at this time, I will ask, is there anyone here from Kilios Commuter Services? I'm going to go to members of committee. Do you have any input on this?
No, I'm all set. I think what your presentation made it pretty clear as to, there's no need for the, for the, for a permit from us, so I don't have any questions.
To the chair, I have no questions either.
All right, at this time, I will ask if there's anyone in attendance in the audience that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to 18-22. For a second time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to petition 18-22? For the third and final time, is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition 18-22? I'm sorry, and any members of the council have any? All right, at this time, Mr. President, I will close the public hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. Just another couple of minutes and we'll start the 6:45 one.
Peter, Mount Pleasant, is that you, Ward 5?
Yes.
Yeah, no, I was, because the police department had put up.
6:45, Mr. Chairman, if you're ready.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This will be a public hearing of the Legal Affairs Committee. Petition 21-22. Julio Ramos, traffic officer, Leominster Police Department, requests to amend Chapter 13, Section 1324 of the revised ordinances entitled "No Parking on Certain Streets," to be amended by inserting the following text, "Mount Pleasant Ave., Easterly Side, from a point beginning at 20 feet from the intersection with Mechanic Street to a point of 760 feet from the intersection with Pine Street." This regarding firefighting vehicles inability to maneuver with parking on both sides of the street. We have a, well, actually, let's see. We don't have anything from the fire department on this, however, it's obviously inspired by their inability to get to a fire up there, so obviously, I'm not going to let that hold me up. It's pretty self-explanatory. I'm going to ask if members of, Counselor Bedanza, if you have anything you'd like to add?
I have no questions.
Counselor Cormier?
Just briefly, I did have the opportunity to speak with the police chief, and at his suggestion, I did go up to Mount Pleasant Avenue, and I did try, I did go up there at a couple of different times a day. I went there and earlier morning, about 7:30, 8 o'clock, and I can tell you, with the parking, which would just be from the neighborhood, it is really, really tight fit. And I did see they have put up some temporary no parking signs, and that has helped, I will say that. It opens it up, and I felt like I could drive through with no problem. Prior to that, it is a really, really tight fit. I was, actually went again a little bit later in the day, and it seemed like probably people were out to work, so it wasn't quite as noticeable. I went back after dinnertime hours, and, and again, it was a pretty tight fit, so. My position is, and I haven't heard from anyone specifically in the neighborhood as of yet, this is in my ward, so if there is anyone who would like to speak to me, obviously, I would ask them to, but I would, I would agree that something needs to be done, and the no parking, at least on one side, would make a big difference.
Thank you, Counselor Cormier. Are there any members of the council that would like to weigh in?
I would, just because I'm quite familiar with the area. And just some background, just so you know, with the additional restaurants opening up in the area on Manning, the landlord, who owns a lot of parking on, on Mount Pleasant, started enforcing the tow zone, no overnight parking, and he had a couple cars towed. The employees from all the restaurants nearby have been asked to park in those spots, okay? So, it, it's going to be tight for the people out there, but I was there the day of that fire, and the fire vehicle had to go through a car to get to the fire. So, we have to do something that's, life is way too more important than some inconvenience, but, so, you know, we do have to understand people need a place to park also, so maybe working with the landlords in the area or things like that, maybe we can, you know, suggest to them to have enough parking for the amount of apartments, because I know a couple vehicles, and I think the city was liable for the damage to those vehicles, but... So, just having a real deep knowledge of that area, I would 100% support no parking.
Anyone else? All right, let me go to the public. Is there anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition 21-22? For the second time, is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak either in favor of or in opposition to petition 21-22? And for the third and final time, is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition 21-22? Hearing none, I declare the public hearing closed.
Okay, and we have one final, 6:51?
Yes, sir. There's one minute to go?
All set.
All right. It's a public hearing of the Legal Affairs Committee, petition 20-22. Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the Planning Board, requests to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the parking of unregistered vehicles, re overflow lots. It's my understanding that we are still waiting for a referral from the building inspector, the zoning board of appeals as well. I do, though, however, have a couple of referrals that I'd like to read into the record, one from the planning board and one from the license commission. Okay. This one is from Elizabeth Wood, Planning and Development Director, dated November 2nd, 2021. Petition to the City Council for zoning amendment pertaining to the parking of unregistered vehicles. Attention, City Council, on 11/1/21, the Planning Board voted 6 to 0 to petition the City Council for a zoning amendment pertaining to the parking of unregistered vehicles. It was brought to the board's attention that there are places in the city that are being used as overflow lots for tow yards or for car dealerships for unregistered vehicles. This is not desired, this is not to be confused with the licensed car dealerships themselves, as these are permitted a designated amount of unregistered vehicles on their dealership lots. The goal of the proposed zoning amendments to the use chart within the zoning regulations is to create a space for parking areas for unregistered vehicles to exist, but only in the industrial zone with a special permit and site plan approval from the planning board. Also presented is a definition for tow yards and provisions detailing the parameters for parking unregistered vehicles, including penalties for violation. Please review the draft amendment, consider making an amendment to zoning, regards Elizabeth Wood. The next letter would be from James Kelly, Chair of the License Commission, dated November 1st, 2021. And this is actually addressed to Ms. Wood, but Mr. Kelly asked that I enter this into the record this evening. In response to your request for feedback regarding the draft ordinance addressing the parking of unregistered vehicles, the License Commission has the following comments. Prior to the Planning Board approving a site plan from an applicant, the License Commission would like the opportunity to provide their feedback. In regard to 47.9, parking of unregistered motor vehicles, the License Commission requests that in addition to automobile dealerships, all tow yards and overflow lots be licensed through the Leominster License Commission. If you have any questions or need further information, please feel free to contact this office. Sincerely, James Kelly, Kenneth Tater, and Ms. Hewitt. So, as we, if you recall, last year when we had the License Commission before us, one of the things Mr. Kelly said in parting was, he'd like to see this matter addressed. So, clearly, it's worked its way through the system, and it's now in our lap. From my perspective, I think that the referral from the building inspector is critical in this situation, because the building inspector's office obviously will be the enforcement vehicle to ensure that if we do adopt this ordinance, it has adequate enforcement. So, having said that, let me see if I can get some additional input from members of my committee, Counselor Bedanza?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would agree with you, I want to hear from the building inspector before we do anything on this, and in specific, I want to, I want his opinion relative to, I know there's at least one of these lots in existence in the city currently, that's been operating at least for a couple of years, and I want to know whether, in his opinion, that yard would enjoy status as a prior non-conforming use. And the only other comment I would have awaiting the building inspector's opinion would be with respect to the License Commission piece of this, I think we need to, would need to see a separate petition. That's really what Mr. Kelly is requesting is really not formally before us. That, I think, ought to be the subject of a, like I said, a separate, a separate petition to us.
Do we note it, Counselor? Thank you, Counselor Cormier?
I have no questions.
Members of the council? Counselor Brady?
I actually attended the License Commission meeting just a few minutes ago, and Mr. Kelly actually had an applicant in front of him, and this gentleman's requesting a license, but brought up something that we probably hadn't thought of, is a lot of online, he does a lot of online auction items. So, it was a question that is certainly not addressed in our ordinances, so anything we do, I would suggest that we put the verbiage in online and, you know, update going forward. It's one of those angles we really have to consider.
Thank you, Counselor Brady. Anyone else? Mr. President?
Thank you very much. I, you know, I also want to echo the same comments of Counselor Bedanza. I know that there's, you know, been an issue with a lot and unregistered cars in my ward as well, so I think it's very important to understand what's pre-existing, non-conforming, and, you know, have a list of those from the building inspector. I'm sure he's identified where those would be, or I'd like him to identify where those would be so that it's clear. And, you know, I'd like to get his perspective on, obviously, you know, he's the, going to be the enforcement agency on this, so I want to get his perspective on, you know, what he's thinking in terms of enforcement, so. I mean, we can have all the laws and the books we want, but if we don't have mechanisms to enforce them, none of them are good, and I know that, you know, some of these are, you know, hard issues when, you know, people go back and forth about, you know, so if we're going to have any kind of an ordinance, it's got to be very clear as to what, what is and isn't permitted, so we need his input, it's very important, so that we can enforce what we pass, so, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other councils that would like to weigh in on this? Seeing none at this moment, I'm going to go to the audience. Is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition 20-22? For the second time, is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition 20-22? And for the third and final time, is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition 20-22? Hearing none? I think, Mr. President, I would like to keep this hearing open.
Okay.
And hopefully, we can, perhaps I can ask the clerk to follow up and see if the building inspector could provide us with that referral that we've been waiting for.
I would actually recommend that we continue this public hearing to February 14th, 2022, at 6:50 PM, because the building inspector informed me that he will not provide an opinion until the zoning board of appeals meets, which is February 7th.
Very good.
Madam Clerk, could you also note my question to him about the prior non-conforming use? Thank you.
Okay, are you all set? We'll continue to, I'm sorry, I'm going to do the public forum. Oh, okay. I figured I could do it very quickly. Okay, it is now 7:00 PM, so I'm going to call to the meeting of January 10th, 2022, and ask that you all stand and please join me for a salute to the flag.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm now going to take a roll call of councils in attendance, beginning with Counselor Bedanza.
Present.
Counselor Cormier.
Present.
Counselor Ardinger.
Present.
Counselor Angelini.
Present.
Counselor Brady.
Present.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Counselor Deacon.
Present.
Counselor Frida.
Present.
And I am present. All nine members are present. Does the, does the chair, I'm sorry, does Madam Vice President have the records to approve?
I do, Mr. President. I have reviewed the records from the meetings held on December 13th, 2021, January 3rd, 2022, special meeting, and January 3rd, 2022, reorganizational meeting. I have refined, reviewed them. I find them to be in good order, and I would ask that they be placed on file.
Okay, anybody, everybody all set with that? Counselor Frida?
No, Mr. President, I have, on the minutes of December 13th, it's just a typo under community calendar, just speaking of Counselor Dombrowski, who spoke of how he enjoyed working with him and wished himself. I'm sure it's supposed to be well, just a typo. And also, on January 3rd, the organizational meeting, under my comments, when I talked about the inclusiveness and teamwork, I talked about a two-year, the election every two years of a president, and I also said, I've been on the council 28 years, but no one in the past eight years has asked for their vote, asked me for their vote, not 28 years, so, those would be corrected, please.
Okay, so we will, if it's okay, Madam Vice President, we will place them on file with, they'll make those adjustments tomorrow, and then we will place them on file?
Certainly.
Okay. All right, at this moment, can I ask for a motion and a second for a recess so we can have the public forum? Motion made by Counselor Bedanza, seconded by Counselor Cormier, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, 9 to nothing. We are now in recess for a moment. We are now going to hold the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on any matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address, along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions, however, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak at the public forum? If so, please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. And for the second time, would anybody in the audience like to speak at the public forum? And for the third and final time, would anybody like to speak at the public forum? Seeing none, I now declare the public forum closed, and we are now back in session, and we will move right into item number four, which is communications from the mayor, beginning with C-
Mr. President, point of order, are we supposed to vote on the continuation of the public hearing?
Do you want me to answer?
Yeah.
We can do that when it goes under Legal Affairs.
We've been doing it here, so I, I'm not sure.
We can, at either time, it's okay, as long as we vote for it once.
Best practice has been with Counselor Dombrowski doing it there, so.
As long as we do it at least once on the meeting, it's fine, so during the public hearing or not.
Doesn't matter.
No.
Okay, all set. All right, we will begin with communications from the mayor, C-43, Madam Clerk?
C-43. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests an appropriation of $45,000 be made to the collective bargaining expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding police department sick leave and vacation leave payouts.
And C-43 will be referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President, first time on the calendar, regular course, please.
Okay, C-43 has been given regular course. C-44?
C-44. Dean J. Mazzarella, requests an appropriation of $250,000 be made to the fire department overtime account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding fire department overtime.
And C-44 is also referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Likewise, Mr. President, first time on the calendar, regular course, please.
C-44 has been given regular course. Moving on to item number five, petitions, first time on the calendar, 24-22.
24-22. Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the Planning Board, requests to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to performance guarantees for site plans regarding to ensure that all conditions of approval issued by the Planning Board for site plan are completed.
24-22 is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
First time on the calendar, Mr. President, regular course.
Okay, and we also need to establish the public hearing as well for January 24th, 2022, at 6:50 PM.
I'm sorry?
We also need to establish the public hearing as well.
I just didn't hear the date.
For January 24th, at 6:50 PM.
Thank you.
Okay. So, 24-22 has been given regular course with a public hearing of January 24th, 2022, at 6:50 PM. All those in favor of the public hearing signify in usual manner. Those opposed? By a vote of 9 to 0, the public hearing has been established. Moving on to item number six, matters before the City Council, the financial report.
Thank you, Mr. President. We started the fiscal year with a balance in the stabilization account of $19,904,602. During the course of the fiscal year, we've added interest in the amount of $23,972. And with all of the matters, money orders that have been approved, and the ones pending tonight, assuming they all are passed, those total $3,261,998, which would leave then a balance in the stabilization account of $16,666,577. That's the financial report. In addition to that, I do have a report relative to excess and deficiency of free cash. I spoke with the comptroller a couple of times in the last week. She did have the auditors in here the week before last, and I'm happy to report that this morning, Schedule A, was uploaded to the Department of Revenue, and of course, at this point, our preliminary work with respect to free cash certification is done, and the Department of Revenue will review it and report to us at some point. Not exactly sure when that will be, but hopefully in the relatively near future. And that's the financial report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Seeing none, we will move on to items under Finance, C-40. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am. C-40, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests an appropriation of $14,000 to be transferred from the recreation capital account to the skate park capital fund project regarding the funding skate project. All of you probably are aware that the cities in the- All of you probably are aware that the city is in the process of planning and building a skate park or expanding the park that's on Johnson Street, which will be named in honor of Frankie Fortuna, who was the young man who tragically lost his life in a hit-and-run accident a few years ago on Mechanic Street. The project has not been put out to bid yet. There's been a cost estimate established for the various aspects of this construction. It's not really cast in stone yet, but this is starting to look like about $700,000 in total. What's not finally established or firmly established is what the parking area is going to look like. It's a pretty costly part of this park, and right now, they're talking about going from the existing parking area, which is not really safe because cars have to back out into Johnson Street, to having an established parking area with a drive that may cost as much as $192,000, depending exactly how it's designed and built. There are, there was a grant that was established for this in the amount of $248,000. And last year, the comptroller allowed the recreation commissioner to encumber $14,000 of money left over in our operational account. And what she's asking us to do, or the mayor's asking us to do as a result, is to take the encumbered money and transfer it from the leftover from last year in the operational account into the capital account for this particular project. It's only, you know, a step in the direction. It's obviously not nearly enough money to cover all of the costs of this, and we don't know until it's finally bid what the costs are going to be. I did talk to Mr. Chapdeline about it. I think the project is probably not too far from going out to bid, but again, we don't have final costs for this, and, of course, we haven't seen a final appropriation down here, if in fact that's what the mayor decides to do. So, this is simply to park the $14,000 in the potential, in the skate pack, skate park capital account, in case, in fact, we go forward with the skate park and it's built. And that would be my position, Mr. President, to grant C-40. I have to ask you to check with members of my committee.
Okay. Councilor Cormier?
I agree.
Councilor Angelini?
I'm in agreement as well, Mr. President.
Okay. Looks like unanimous agreement from the finance committee to grant C-40. Is there any questions or comments? Councilor Frida?
I support this skateboard park, and we voted on it initially with a lot of different numbers than we have now. I have no problem transferring the encumbered money, but I really do think I'd like to see Judith Sumner come down here for information, along with the comptroller. We have, I mean, $300,000 for an additional parking lot that was added on. I mean, I think we need to look at that. $10,000 for security cameras, while I agree with that, I don't think we have one security camera anywhere. Do we even have any at Doyle Field, do we? Do we have any at Litchfield Street? And I don't think we have them anywhere.
I think we have them at Carter Park, for sure.
There's a few around town.
I don't think there are a whole lot that we have. I'm not saying we shouldn't have them, but I mean, I think we need to set some priorities. $300,000 for the parking lot bothers me. I mean, we could have the gravel lot, and we paid for engineering. I think we need to have a discussion about that. I mean, we tell the people one thing when we vote on supporting the park, and then by the time we're done, we're adding four, three, four, $500,000 to what we originally told people it was going to cost them. So I'd like to have Judy come down with the comptroller and just kind of go through some of these numbers and see what's important. If upper money covers it, that's fine, and it probably will, but I don't, I mean, the direction upper money has gone is all over the place. I would think you'd be able to work it in with kids and recreation, but if you can't and it's committed, then you're talking about us putting in, you know, $300,000 for a parking lot. I'd rather see a gravel lot and then have some things at the park, some events there that can be donation-wise, and have them work towards putting a parking lot over the next few years and us possibly helping them. But I just think adding that much money on to something we've talked about and so far off from the original class, I think is, is a little bit much.
In my discussions with Ms. Sumner, it was pretty clear that the gravel lot was going to be the option, but I would agree with you, Counselor, that there really isn't a whole lot of definition as to what they're doing here, whereas the mayor is the appropriating authority, and he's going to have to be the one that puts the finishing touches on any communication that comes down to us and justify the amount of the order that he's seeking. If we want to have a discussion prior to the bid and prior to the mayor sending down his communication, it might be more appropriate to have the discussion...
Through the spreadsheet, so...
Yeah.
I think she would, I'd like to have her answer.
Well, I don't have a problem with that. I'm just, was about to suggest, rather than the comptroller, because the comptroller, of course, doesn't make the appropriation, it might be more appropriate to have Ms. Sumner and the mayor down.
That's fine.
To have that discussion. So we can reach out through the city clerk's office to see if the mayor and Ms. Sumner want to come down and give us an update.
Through the chair, the only reason I suggested the comptroller is because they have a handle on the upper money.
Yeah.
And she might have a different opinion as to the availability of that money.
Okay. Well, she can come along as well. All right.
Anybody else have any discussion? No? Seeing none? All those in favor of granting C-40 signify in usual manner? Those opposed? By a vote of nine to zero, C-40 is granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Excuse me?
Yes.
I am stained.
Oh, okay. So your abstention, Mr. Brady, has been noted, so eight to zero.
My daughter is on the skate park committee, so I don't feel appropriate for me to vote on it.
Okay. All right. So that'll be an eight to zero vote with Mr. Brady's abstention. Counselor Brady, is, does the chairman have an order?
I do. Ordered that the sum of $14,000 be transferred to the skate park capital project fund, transferred from the recreation capital account. Same, ordered, move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order, please say yea.
Yea.
Those opposed? Okay. By a vote of eight to zero, C-40 has been adopted. Moving on to C-41. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am. C-41, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests an appropriation of $126,405 be made to the purchasing contracted services line, the same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. And this is regarding the demolishment of two structures that are unsafe. One is located on Burt Street and the other one on Lincoln Terrace. Councilors may remember that we passed an amount of money for these two demolitions. It turns out that the amount that was transferred was woefully less than what was required. The purchasing agent underestimated what, in fact, these bids were going to be returned at, and the deficit between what we previously appropriated to the contracted services line and what it's actually going to cost for the demolition of these two structures is the amount that's being sought in this order, $126,405. I can report to you that the Burt Street structure is owned by the city. I did the title work myself and determined that it was take, there was a tax taking that was foreclosed. The city Lemister does, in fact, own that structure. On Lincoln Terrace, the situation is different. There's a tax lien or a tax taking that goes back to 2007 fiscal year for about $3,000. It's been sitting there ever since. I've been told by the comptroller that that's going to be foreclosed likely sometime in February, which would ultimately give the city title to the property. In addition to that, of course, once we raise this structure, we'll have a lien for the demolition costs. Given the condition of this structure and the fact that it sits on .1391 acres of land, it is highly unlikely that anybody's going to pay enough money to reduce either one of those liens, and as a practical matter, we'd be blessed beyond miracles if we got all our money back with respect to this demolition work. However, this isn't about, of course, the city's recovering. It's about a health and human habitation situation that's pretty significant. If you go on the GIS map for the city, you can see the roof of the Lincoln Terrace structure, for example. It's completely open. It's been open to the weather for years now. One can only imagine what's happening inside that building. So I think it's absolutely imperative that we appropriate this money, get these structures raised, and, you know, save the butters in the direct neighborhood from any further difficulties with these structures. So my position would be, Mr. President, would be to approve or to grant C-41. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Okay. Counselor Cormier?
I can say I'm much more familiar with the Lincoln Terrace property, and I don't even know how it's still standing. It's a health hazard. It's a dangerous situation over there, so I am totally in support of this.
Okay. Counselor Angelini?
I'm afraid this is one of those situations where we're just going to have to hold our nose and appropriate the money and raise that structure as soon as possible.
Okay. So it sounds like unanimous recommendation from finance to grant C-41? I flipped my page already. Is there any, is there any discussion? Counselor Frida?
I'm not sure about the Lincoln Terrace property, but if I recall, Burt Street years ago was the property I'm thinking of. Don't we have CDBG money attached to that property?
Well, that wouldn't matter anymore because we own it. So we, if we foreclosed, if there was a mortgage on there for CDBG money, we already foreclosed the title to the property.
So what I'm saying is we lost that money.
That's right.
That money didn't come back to us to go back into some...
That's correct, because we're the owner of the property.
So we lost it.
That's correct.
Do we have an idea how much we lost on that property?
I didn't research what the CDBG lien was, but whatever it was, you're quite correct.
I think there are a couple of different instances that we put CDBG money into that house.
Yeah. You are correct that that money would not be recoverable at this point.
Okay. Are you all set, Counselor Frida? Any other, any other comments? Seeing none? All those in favor of granting C-41 signify in usual manner? Those opposed? By a vote of eight to one, C-41 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
I do, Mr. President. Ordered that the sum of $126,405 be transferred from the stabilization account to the purchase, purchasing contracted services line. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed?
Yea.
By a vote of eight to one, the order has been adopted. Moving on to C-42. Is the Chairman of Finance ready to report?
I am. C-42, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the approval of $550,000 for the purchase of 253 Leggett Hill Road, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is regarding the exercise of the right of first refusal to purchase 253 Leggett Hill Road. Obviously, this property was in 61A. The owner desires to take it out, and as a result, has triggered a right of first refusal because they received a offer on the property. And that information, I think Counselor Frida asked for at the last meeting, has been provided to the council. And we have a letter from the owner's attorney with that information indicating that they had an offer in the amount of $550,000. The property in question is approximately eight acres of land, an old structure that's on it. We have three referrals that came back, one from the planning board. I'll read that one into the record. This is from Elizabeth Wood, dated November 2nd, 2021. The planning, the planning board reviewed the consideration of the land purchase of a 253 Leggett Hill. Considering the right of first refusal at their regular meeting on 11/1/21, the board voted five to one to make no recommendation and to defer the matter to the city council. We have a referral back from the conservation agent, Ms. Schofield. The commission reviewed the property at the regularly scheduled meeting, October 26th, 2021. In our review, the commission feels the property should be evaluated for recreation purposes versus conservation. They feel the land would be a great location for a park, dog park, or municipal field. They feel it would not be beneficial to restrict the entirety of the area to conservation due to the location and topography of the area. Respectfully, Angela Schofield. And let's see. I think I misspoke. There were actually only two referrals, and both of them came back. I spoke to the mayor about this, particular communication. There is no specific identified use for the property, other than the fact that he suggested that the city wants to take a look at what the possibilities are for the parcel. In addition to that, after surveying all of the various city departments, if in fact the city does not want to keep or maintain the land, they want to have a control in how it's developed. Obviously, through zoning, we have some control over the development of property, but if the city, in fact, is the landowner and sells it directly to the ultimate developer, the control is even more significant. The assessor's office did an analysis of what the property value would be in, with respect to a development for housing, and they did it on the basis of five lots being developed out of these eight acres of land, and they came up with an estimated value for the property of $475,000. Based on the proximity of the land, its qualities, the fact that, you know, the neighborhood has had a lot of development, and the mayor is sensitive to how this land would ultimately develop and wants to exert some measure of control over it, Mr. President, would be my position to grant C-42, and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
Counselor Angelini?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things. I'd like to just respectfully disagree with our conservation agent's conclusion on this property as far as its conserve, potential conservation uses. I mean, if you look at the plot plan that we were provided, directly to the rear of the property boundary, there's a significant wetland area. So if you take into account the delineated wetland area, the 100-foot buffer zone associated with resource area protection, that comes into play, although it's not part of the transfer of the property, it's directly abuts it. So in my opinion, it increases dramatically the potential conservation use. Also, these kind of land acquisition projects, I mean, I've been in favor of them for years, particularly when they're done in our water supply protection district, generally coupled with some grant money from the Department of Conservation and Recreation. Unfortunately, that's not going to be the case this time, but I'm sure if the city decided to rehab the house and market it or use it for some point for department, there'd be grant money available for that. I just, I agree with, with the finance chair's comment too about the, you know, the continuity, the character of the neighborhood. I mean, those of us who attended the December 18th public hearing up in Room 10 on this project, I mean, the mayor did, you know, he was quite clear that there have been absolutely no decisions made on how the property is going to be used. But as we all know, once it's sold, it's gone, and we won't have another bite at this apple. These kind of, you know, in my wood, wood five, we're really fortunate. We've got the Doyle Conservation area. We have trailhead to North Manousnak. Wood four's seen a lot of land purchases. We're all in our water supply protection district to provide passive recreational uses for the entire community. So these little pockets of land do protect the character of the neighborhood, and it prevent, could prevent us at some point from having to go in, widen the road, put sidewalks in, and before you know it, you know, this, this Leggett Hill area loses that charm that it has, in my opinion. So, in light of all those traits that I mentioned, I'm going to be supportive of this as well.
Okay. So it sounds like we have another unanimous recommendation from the finance committee to grant C-42. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Frida?
First of all, I spoke with Mr. Exaros just on the outside chance that he was the purchaser, whom we didn't have a... Pretty, pretty easy to figure out that it might be him. It was, and it's not five potential lots, it's four, according to Mr. Exaros. It's already, it's already figured that out. There's also utilities on this, the assessor's office, talking about water and sewer connections. I don't believe there's sewer up there, so that's, that's an overestimate of that connection. Floorhouse lots, not five. This very... This very council voted against purchasing the property on Central Street that, I don't know if it butts that property, but it's pretty close if it doesn't, for $350,000 because we didn't think it was in a place that we wanted to acquire that property. Now we're looking at this one for 550, and I don't agree, I don't disagree with the Wood 5 councilor that there is conservation issue up there. As a matter of fact, a lot of it's wet. We're not talking about tearing that property down. We already know, it's been said in the PNS, that the property would have to, is uninhabitable, that would have to come down. So we'd have something coming back to us later to the tune of thousands of dollars to tear the structure down. And we don't know what's underneath the structure. $550,000 is a lot of money to purchase this property in an area, I mean, the neighbors would like it. I mean, obviously, the gentleman from Leggett Hill that spoke at the last meeting lives a house or two down from that property. Of course, you'd like to have that vacant for as long as you can have it. But what are you gonna do if you decide to have a dog park, lorry park? You're not gonna restrict it to just the Leggett Hill people. It's gotta be open to a lot of people around there, independents, by Centennial. You can come from the other side of town if you're gonna use taxpayer dollars to buy it. I just think it should be long and hard looked at before we spend a half a million dollars. I mean, we're talking over half, close to a million dollars between a skate park and a piece of land that's tucked away. The time to save the hill was when there was no possibility of building up there. Now, the hill is almost all built out. So, I mean, to try to save four house lots and control what goes there, I think is a little bit of a stretch. I'm not in support of this for that reason, unless there was a lot more research that would be done on it. I just think it's a lot of money for, you know, some of the issues that are brought up that don't even justify purchasing it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yep. Thank you very much. I have really mixed feelings about this because normally I am a supporter of open space and purchasing parcels of land, you know, to protect our watershed and to provide recreational opportunities. $550,000 is a lot of money. That's a lot of money. And to Counselor Frida's point, you know, we're talking about an extra $300,000 for the skate park. Again, a great project and a very important recreational opportunity for young folks in the city. But I have really mixed feelings about this. There's no, and I had asked about, I was unfortunately was not able to make the December, I think it was the 16th, public hearing, and had asked for information about the use. What's the proposed use? I would think that if somebody was asking for $550,000 to purchase a parcel of land, that there would be a pretty well-thought-out plan, or at least a proposal of, you know, these are the possible uses, and this is how we would, you know, accommodate a dog park, or this is how we would accommodate walking trails, whatever it is. I was told, you know, three or four times, that, well, there is no plan. There was no plan mentioned. I was told specifically that there was no plan. I could not attend that public hearing and asked, well, what was discussed? Was there any material talked about? Were there any specifics talked about at that meeting in terms of, you know, this is how the city wants to use it? I was told that there was none. I don't know because there's no, so...
I think I did say that.
You did? Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, so I'm saying, so that's the case. You know, we're not even asking any questions. It's a $550,000 request to spend taxpayers' money, and we don't have any specific information about how the city really, is it an important purchase? I mean, you know, what level of, you know, I guess, what level, you know, is it a good thing to have? Is it a great thing to have? Is it something the city must have? It's an opportunity, certainly, you know, to protect a nice piece of property. I love Leggett Hill. You know, I've been up there many times. It's beautiful. I love that particular parcel, that old home, you know, that sits up there and that's derelict. It's a shame because it's absolutely beautiful. So, you know, I have mixed feelings about it. On the one hand, I really do want to support it because I like open space. I think it's important. I think recreation is important. I would love to see a dog park somewhere in the city, and if somebody had come down and said, "We're gonna put a dog park there, and oh, by the way, we've got walking trails, and here's the plan, here's the plan, and this is why we're asking for the $550,000", I'd feel a lot better about that. So those are my comments.
Okay. Any further discussion? Counselor Brady?
It was my understanding that this particular lot has great historic meaning, but I haven't been able to find that out for sure. If that is the case, that this was bequeathed to the Leggits from King George, I think that's an important historic fact that could justify the purchase, but I just don't know. I can't find that out. So I would have to question the purchase if that's not the case. You know, I would absolutely love to protect a historic piece of property like that for the city and the city's history and, you know, et cetera. But without, you know, assurances that this is where it came from, you know, does it have the historic value for a half a million dollars?
Okay. Counselor Ardinger?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I've always been in favor of as much open space as we can get, and Wood 5 really does not have a whole lot of, you know, recreational areas. And so for that kind of reason, I support it, but I agree with Counselor Zephyr and Frida that $550,000 is a lot of money, and I don't know if it'd be appropriate or not to ask the committee to reassess this and maybe give it further time so we can get an explanation from the mayor as to what the property would be used for. That's just my thoughts.
Well, I think unfortunately, I've been told anyway that we are under the gun, like there's, we have to give them an answer. I believe tomorrow is the deadline. So there's, unfortunately, and that's why we had to have a special meeting so we could get this on the agenda for the first time at that meeting, so we could, we gotta act on it tonight, unfortunately. And I understand it's a tough decision and a short notice, but that tomorrow is the
Counselor Badanza?
Yes. Couple of points. We did look at, Counselor Alidge is correct, we did look at a Central Street parcel a few years ago, and I believe it was a split vote that rejected the purchase. Totally different parcel of land. The mayor did come down here and talk about, in similar terms, possibilities, but with no definiteness with respect to that parcel. And whether it's four lots or five lots, one thing's for sure, the offer that triggered the right of first refusal was by a sophisticated developer who offered $550,000 to give you an idea of the value of the property. So I have no doubt, although it's an expenditure which we're converting one asset to another asset, we're converting money to land. And as you've seen what's happened in the marketplace, I think having the, having control of this land, given its picturesque nature, given where it is, given the development the neighborhood's already suffered, and I can speak a little bit to the historic side of this, I can tell you that this was Leggett land. I mean, the Leggits owned the entire hill at one point, and the Leggits had a prominent role in the Revolutionary War. If you want to go across the street to the library on the second floor of the old structure, you can see a portrait of Mary Leggett, who was a descendant of the Leggett family that married Metaphor Chase, who was a shopkeeper. A stone throw behind me down the street, were prominent families, both two prominent families in Leominster. And I'm sure that the Leggett family did in fact trace the title of that property to a king's grant, just like a lot of other parcels. And the new grant, which was purchased from the Secum to Hato, his title to the land back in 1701, when Lancaster was added to or added to. So it's clear that the property has a potential historic aspect to it. But I think moreover, the issue here is, you know, I think the city wants it, rightfully so, have a control in what the heck happens with this piece of property. It's a key piece of property. It's an important piece of property. It's a picturesque piece of property. If we decide that there is no great municipal purpose for it, selling it and recouping our investment and then some with a potential control over what gets built there, I think is a fine thing to do, to help protect the neighborhood, so I remain in favor of it.
Counselor Angelini, I think I saw your hand. You haven't spoken yet.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, just a minor matter, but I just wanted the record to indicate that I was not involved in a Central Street property vote, and I know we have a couple other members, new members, that certainly weren't either. But I'd like to share with you a little anecdote. Years back, maybe 30 years back, I bought a piece of property, and at the closing, my own attorney said, "What did they find, gold up there?" Thought, you know, inferring we paid too much. But looking back, wish I would have bought five of them. So it's not about today, right? It's about like 50 years from now, 100 years from now, that land will still be protected. And people, somebody may say, you know, geez, thank goodness someone was thinking back then, because at that point, those opportunities are gone. The reason Chapter 61 is set up and structured like it is, is to give landowners an opportunity to protect the property without paying the full value of the real estate taxes in exchange for either agriculture or recreational uses or timber forestry. So when we as a city have the opportunity to break the first refusal, we have 120 days. Now, I'm sure you all understand how the wheels turn, you know. By the time the paperwork's submitted to the mayor, the mayor's, you know, got to formulate, sent it down to us, seeking opinions, it's not an awful lot of time to do a significant amount of due diligence. I'm certain that we've done due diligence that would be required to close on the property. So I really believe that this is one of those, again, this is one of those opportunities, if we fail to act, it's gone, and we will never get another bite at this apple. And I think it's a wonderful thing to do for generations to come, whether it, kids use it to sled, or people use it to walk their dog, or we put a trail system in there or connect it to something else down the road. I just think if, you know, it would be a shame to miss this opportunity. And $550,000 may sound like a lot of money now, but the rate of inflation that we're witnessing in real time, 10 years, $550,000 probably would be the cost of a pickup truck. So with that, I...
I hope not. Anybody else?
Four-wheel drive?
I appreciate all the history lesson.
I actually have another one.
This is great.
That Bee Hill is the excuse for Leominster, because back in 1740, you had to go to meeting. It wasn't optional. And the complaint was, a lot of Leominster's early settlement was up in the Upper Pleasant Street area, and they had to walk to Lancaster or take a horse and buggy to Lancaster. They had to go up over that hill, especially in winter. They used it as an argument to allow Leominster to have its own political subdivision and its own charter for a town.
Counselor Frida?
I love the history lesson. But, you know, I gotta tell you, the history lesson should have been, when we were all arguing, to buy this property before Leggett Hill was developed. That's where the history was. That's what we should have preserved. You're looking at a piece of property, has everybody looked at this map?
Yeah.
You're looking at a piece of property that's behind a bunch of houses. What are you gonna preserve? You're not gonna do, do you know what's gonna happen if you have a dog park there? You're gonna have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 15 to 20 people screaming about using that property. And we talk about being under the gun. We talk about being under the gun all the time. Did anybody look at the dates? Everything was done in October. Why did this come down to us now? Why did we get this, have to have a special meeting on January 3, when for three months this was signed off in the city? The assessor's office, I don't have it in front of me now, but I know I looked, November 2, the planning board had their meeting and sent their letter on November 2. So that was in October, they had their meeting. October 27, the Conservation Commission responded to the mayor. Why are we just getting this three days before we have to vote on it? Come on, let's look at it for what it's worth. I mean, we want to talk historical value. I'm the first one to agree on buying property that really makes a difference in this city. But if you're talking land preservation, that's really a stretch to say that this is something that's really gonna appreciate in value, because as an appraiser, I can tell you, that's not gonna happen, not gonna happen the way it's situated. And if we had $350,000 that we denied purchasing because we didn't think it was worth it, maybe we missed the boat. Maybe we should have bought it when it was $350,000 on the other piece of land. But this is really a stretch. I mean, this is really a stretch to say we should spend a half a million dollars and then talk about taking the house down. I mean, we're gonna be building that up again. I mean, this is, this is, and yet, a reputable developer, he knows what the property's worth. I mean, it's valuable to him more than anybody else because he owns everything around there. So of course it's valuable to him. He can assemble some of these properties. So, I mean, I just, I'm just amazed that we're talking about preservation and historical and, you know, with the position of the property, where it is.
Okay. Any other discussion? Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yep. Thank you very much. I just keep coming back to, you know, I think Counselor Frida, the mention of the timeline. I was actually gonna mention that too, because, yeah, this became apparent, and, you know, the work was starting to be done in October. You know, we get it at a special meeting in early January. And, you know, asking, requesting $550,000 with no information, I appreciate the history lessons. I mean, I'm interested in Leominster history, just like everybody else. But to not have a plan, not have any kind of specifics, not have, how would, if constituents say, you know, $550,000, you know, for, you know, seven acres of land, you know, on the other side of, you know, Central Street, what are they gonna do there? I have no idea. Well, they talked about a dog park, maybe walking trails, because the petitioner did not provide a plan. $550,000, if it was a million dollars and he came down with a good plan, I'd support it. You know, it really, the devil is in the details. I'm happy to support things when there's a rationale and when there is backup and there is a plan. Otherwise, I don't feel like I'm responsible, I feel irresponsible spending my constituents' tax money on something like this when there is no information, other than it's a good piece of land, we don't want to miss the boat, it may, you know, it may be of historical value, we really don't know because we don't have any detail. You know, if the mayor had come down with a plan, with the historical information, you know, had put some context there and provided a rationale for me, as a city councilor at large, to hang my hat on, I'd be perfectly happy to support it. I want to support it. I'm a proponent of open space and recreation. I just feel like, for me, this is just, I just don't have enough information. I don't have, I feel irresponsible.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, it is a unanimous recommendation by the Finance Committee to grant C-42. If there's no opposition, I think I'm gonna take a roll call, a voice vote on this one. And I will begin with Counselor Badanza.
Yea.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yea.
Counselor Ardinger.
Yea.
Counselor Angelini.
Yea.
Counselor Brady.
Nay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Nay.
Counselor Deacon.
Yea.
Counselor Frida.
Nay.
And I will be recorded as yea by a vote of six to three. C-42 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
I do. Order that the sum of $550,000 be transferred from the stabilization account for the purchase of 253 Leggett Hill Road. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed?
Nay.
By a vote of six to three, the order has been adopted. Moving on to 22-22. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am. 22-22 Greg C. Chapdeline, purchasing agent, requests to enter a five-year contract for police public safety equipment. Apparently, the police were able to negotiate a three-year deal that was advantageous to them with this particular vendor that they came down and spoke to us about back in December. So there is no need for 22-22 as a result, and Mr. Chapdeline is asking that it be given leave to withdraw, and that would be my recommendation.
Okay. And I will double-check with members of your committee, Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Counselor Angelini?
I'm in agreement as well.
Okay. It's a unanimous recommendation to give 22-22 leave to withdraw. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving 22-22 leave to withdraw signify in usual manner? Those opposed? By a vote of nine to zero, 22-22 has been given leave to withdraw. Moving on to... Moving on to 23-22. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, 23-22, Greg C. Chapdellane, purchasing agent, request to enter a five-year contract for police public safety software. This is a little different, this is still being sought, and there's a letter from Mr. Chapdellane dated, let's see, I have to make sure I have the right one, there it is, dated December 9th, petition to enter into five-year contract. Dear Honorable Members of the Leominster City Council, this petition is to allow the purchasing agent to award a contract for public safety software for the police department for a five-year period. The current software package is at its end of useful life, and a new software package must be procured. Excuse me. In anticipation of this expiration, I'm in the process of preparing an invitation to bid to secure a new software package, the contract for which will begin in early calendar year 2022. Per Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30B, Section 12B, the city can only enter into a service contract for a length of time equal to three years or less. In order to enter to a service contract for a length of time greater than three years, the city council must pass by a majority vote to allow the extension. Said council approval must be granted before the contract is executed. The software covers all daily police operations such as 911 system, crime mapping, community data, sharing case reports, digital evidence, et cetera, as with all city extended year contracts. A longer contract length will allow less disruption in the police department operations from not having to switch software as often, as well as the city receiving better pricing for a long-term contract versus a shorter time period. The petition must be voted upon now as I prepare to issue the new bid. As I must know the time, period, contract length, I'll be able to procure the bid around. I respectfully ask and advise the city council to vote in favor of extending the police public safety software contract to a five-year period. If you have any questions concerning this issue, please do not hesitate to contact me. Signed by Gregory C. Chapdellane and the Police Chief Aaron Kennedy. You may recall a presentation by Chief Kennedy and Captain Farrar about both the hardware and software attendant to these, to these contracts, and how vital it was to the police department, especially as they implement police reform. They wanted to stay on the cutting edge of all of that, and the digitization of information and the requests for information are growing all the time, and the software is very sorely needed in order to keep current and be, allow the police department to function in a efficient way. So, it would be my position to grant 23-22, and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Council Angelini.
I'm in agreement as well.
Okay, it sounds like a unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant 23-22. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of granting 23-22 signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, 23-22 has been granted. Moving on to items under Legal Affairs, 18-22. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Early this evening, we had a public hearing of Achilleo's Community Services LLC. During that hearing, I read into the record a letter from the fire chief asking for leave to withdraw on this petition, in light of the fact that the petitioner was not present either. We had no one from the public commenting either way, so I would, and the Finance Committee did recommend by unanimous vote to give this petition leave to withdraw.
Okay. So, you've heard the recommendation to give 18-22 leave to withdraw. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of giving leave to withdraw to 18-22 signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, 18-22 has been given leave to withdraw. Moving on to 20-22.
Thank you, Mr. President. 20-22, when we had a public hearing earlier this evening, the Finance Committee recommended three to nothing to continue this hearing as we are waiting for, oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, let me back up. Oh, no, unregistered vehicles. Yes, we were waiting for a letter from the billing inspector, I'm sorry, cross-reference my notes. So, we were unanimous in that request to give this further time, and the clerk gave an ample description of why the billing inspector hasn't commented yet, he's waiting for the ZBA, so that's, that's my recommendation.
And we, and we also need to establish or continue the hearing, I should say, to February 14th, 2022 at 6:00 PM?
Correct, February...
Oh, 6:50.
6:50.
6:50 PM. Okay. All right. So, the recommendation of Legal Affairs is to give 20-22 further time and to continue the hearing to February 14th, 2022 at 6:50 PM. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of further time and the hearing for February 14th signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, this has been given further time, and we will have that hearing on February 14th at 6:50 PM. Moving on to 21-22. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Again, early this evening, the Legal Affairs Committee had a public hearing on this petition. The Finance Committee, the Legal Affairs Committee recommended three unanimously that we adopt or pass this petition. Counselor noted that with the advent of so many popular restaurants in that area, and noted that the problem the fire department had accessing a fire in that area, I would ask that we grant 21-22.
Okay. So, you've heard the recommendation from the Legal Affairs Committee, they had a hearing earlier to grant 21-22. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting 21-22 signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, 21-22 has been granted. Moving on to new business, there are no items on the agenda. Moving on to old business, we have a second reading of an ordinance, and I will refer this to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Second reading of an ordinance, 16-22. Council Vice President David Cormier, actually, should be revised, request to amend Chapter 13, Division 2, prohibited parking, Section 13-34, entitled "No Parking on Certain Streets", by deleting in its entirety, Crescent Knoll, North Side, from Lancaster Street, a distance of 50 feet west. And this is the second, the second reading, and I would suggest that we grant this petition.
Adopt?
Adopt the second reading.
Adopt the second reading.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Okay, and I'll check with members of your committee. Council Badanza.
I'm in favor.
Council Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Okay, so you have a unanimous recommendation that we adopt the second reading of 16-22. Is there any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Council Badanza.
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Council Arndinger.
Yay.
Council Angelini.
Yay.
Council Brady.
Yay.
Council Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Council Deacon.
Yay.
Council Frida.
Nay.
And I will be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. The second reading of this ordinance has been adopted. There is one other thing I'd like to mention under old business. Council Cormier, at the organizational meeting, I had asked about Merrick O'Connell, Mr. Madouse, have you been in touch with him?
I did. I did speak with Attorney Madouse last week. He was recovering from, I guess, whatever we all got, so he was a little hoarse, but he is back on board, and he wanted to thank the council for, for keeping him in mind, and he's more than happy to, to continue to represent.
Okay. Thank you very much for that update. Is there any other old business to come before the city council? Council Frida?
Just, yeah, through the chair, 18-22, we're back to the Legal Affairs Chair. Why do they need, not need anything from city council on that?
I'd be happy to let you...
I didn't get a copy of that letter from...
Chief. The chief.
Yeah, the one he was reading, I didn't have.
I think I have.
But I'm just surprised that something of that magnitude, we don't have...
If I, if I may, part of that reading, it's because it didn't hit 10,000 gallons. I did, because it doesn't hit the 10,000 gallon mark, it doesn't come before us. It's only 4,000.
There is, I know in speaking...
Companies go through a good bracket.
I know in speaking with the, in speaking with the fire chief before on another matter with, there is a certain amount that is just not required. Do you have that? Yeah. Council Angelini, if you just want to give another quick explanation?
Again, if you, if you were to refer to the fire, it's called the, well, anyway, I've got, I've got another one, but it's 527 CMR-1.
Yep.
1.12.8.50s requires a permit for less than 10,000 gallons.
And a license for more than 10,000.
And a license for greater than 10,000, correct.
So, so, they need a permit, and they just simply go through the fire department for that.
That's correct.
And, and versus a license, and a license would come from us. 10,000 gallons is the threshold. Over is us, under is just the approval of the fire chief, that's why. Okay? All right. Is there anything else to come under the community calendar? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn by Council Badanza and Council Pauline Cormier. I saw your hand first for a second. All those in favor of adjournment signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Stay warm.